An island originally created to serve as a home for--
Oh, gosh. All right. All right, Nels has got exciting stuff going on, but welcome to the Wednesday, October 22, 2014 meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of October 8.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Wendy.
A second?
Thank you. Did anyone have any observations or thoughts, or I did, I see. In number six, on page two, in the shared readings discussion, the line is, "Peterson appreciated the second article's attempt to extrapolate the impacts on climate change to the water supply such as observation about accelerated evaporation due to, I think it's higher temperatures, not more concrete."
Well, it could be either one. But you were the one who said it, so what do you remember saying?
Yeah, what I recall in the article was a discussion of the elevated temperatures, elevated the--
Right.
The pan evaporation.
The warmer--
Right.
The warmer temperature.
Which was an irrigation question, really.
Right, right, right.
So, Ann, I would appreciate changing "more concrete" to "higher temperature."
I think I talked about the urban heat islands.
Urban heat islands, yes.
More concrete. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other observations about the minutes? Give Gregory a second here to settle in.
Apologize for being late.
We have a motion and second, and we have one correction. All in favor of approving the minutes of October 8. Say aye?
Aye.
And abstent-- opposed and abstentions?
All abstain.
Me.
I'm looking for Kurt and Deborah.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Correspondence, anything from staff?
Yeah, we have a few items tonight. One, wanted to report on the ADU survey, which we had sent out, I think this last week. We'll probably look for three to four weeks to get those back, and then we'll report back to the commission at that point, since we have some results. Also, I wanted to report that this last Monday, City Council approved the Lot of Record Amendment, which was before you a couple weeks ago, and so wanted to report on that. And then also, upcoming on November 12, we have the commission's fair, which will be from 5:00 to 7:00 at the 1912 Center, and those are tentative dates, but as soon as that's solidified, we'll send out an email to everybody, just to make sure. And so, we do have a commission meeting that night, and so whoever attends the commission's fair will probably have to just leave, you know, 10, 15 minutes early to make the meeting, so.
Good. Thank you for that last item. I had been at another meeting and was almost surprised that-- oh, here's the commission's fair!
Yeah.
Good. So, 5:00 to 7:00 on the 12th. I plan to be there more to represent the Tree Commission than P&amp;Z, but I certainly will wear both hats. But if others of you wish to come--
I will be far away in lovely Savannah, Georgia.
I see. Rub it in.
Studying planning issues.
Of course you will, Nels. Any other correspondence? All right. Transportation Commission meeting report. Was there one? Joel isn't here.
I don't recall there being one, but--
Okay.
Did it happen?
So--
I don't have anything to report, because I wasn't there, so I'd have to get back to you next meeting.
What we know is there was one, and there is no report. Okay. Open microphone. Focus on our member of the audience. This is a time, and this is a general focus on the TV cameras, time where members of the public may speak to the commission regarding matters that are not on our agenda tonight or currently pending before Planning and Zoning Commission. If you wish to do so, please state your name and address for the record, and limit your remarks to three minutes. Any takers? No takers. All right. Public hearing. Amendment of Title IV, Chapter III, to allow residential uses within commercial zoning districts. The way this works is staff will introduce-- actually, we should do this as professional development for you. Staff will introduce the matter, and then we will open the public hearing and take testimony in three categories. Testimony in support, testimony in opposition, testimony of a general nature, and then we will close the public hearing, discuss amongst ourselves, and decide the matter. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commission members. So, before you tonight, we have a public hearing for a legislative amendment, and that is of Title IV, Chapter III, to allow residential uses within commercial zoning districts. And so, just to run through a little bit of background on this matter, we have received, us being the Community Development Department, numerous inquiries over the years regarding the allowance of residential uses within commercial zones, where they're typically not allowed, except through maybe a planned unit development process. And so, also coinciding with that is the 2013 council goals, and one of those goals was to expand the perceived downtown area, basically from East Street to the South Couplet, and that's located on Main Street, through construction of streetscapes improvements, such as improvement or repair of sidewalks, installation of street trees, and installation of luminaires and furnishings. But also included within that goal was the evaluation of zoning and development standards on the corridor. And so, within that area, we have the Motor Business zoning district, which basically encompasses that whole area on both sides of the street. So, we had taken a look at that, as we previously reported, and really, a zone change to a different zone under the zoning code would create too many nonconformities, really, for us to deal with. And so, from there, we decided that maybe an amendment to the Motor Business district to include more residential uses, as well as to maybe change some of the setback requirements, was warranted instead of a zone change. And so, we had taken a look at, basically, how four other municipalities in the region handled residential uses within commercial districts. We'd looked at Lewiston, Pullman, Coeur d'Alene, and Missoula. We also looked at other city commercial zoning districts, and so, not just the Motor Business zone, we looked at all the commercial zoning districts within the zoning code, and whether or not we can incorporate some residential uses within those zones. And we had identified the following districts: the Neighborhood Business Zone, General Business Zone, Motor Business, of course, and the Industrial Zone. And so, looking at the current language, with our proposed language, under the, basically, Neighborhood Business zoning district is where we'll begin. Permitted principal uses and structures. The first subsection there is number one. We say residential uses are allowed, include residential rental unit, provided that any dwellings located on the ground floor shall be located behind commercial uses in a manner that will not interrupt commercial frontage. And basically, we have added "on the primary street," and so, this is when corner lots come into play, and also say "except as otherwise authorized herein." And so, residential uses may be allowed on the ground floor of secondary street frontages on corner lots. And so, the thought behind this, if you have a corner lot, you usually have the primary street frontage, the primary corridor, the Neighborhood Business corridor that has a commercial frontage. Or you may have many side streets, and it seemed a little too onerous in dealing with other development potential and inquiries to require a commercial to wrap around that entire corner lot frontage, especially when it's transitioning to residential on one of those side streets. And so, that's why we had included this amendment within Neighborhood Business, and we also say, under conditional uses, we're allowing residential uses, including the residential rental units, basically to be located on the ground floor when they're not located behind commercial or otherwise authorized herein. So, basically, allowing them to be located on the ground floor through a conditional use permit. Brings us to the General Business zoning district. Basically, same allowance here. So, residential uses, including residential rental unit, provide dwellings located on the ground floor shall be located behind commercial uses in a manner that will not interrupt commercial frontage, except otherwise authorized herein, and then they may be allowed on the ground floor on secondary street frontages of corner lots. We have basically removed the portion that is currently within that zoning district under permitted accessory uses and structures. Basically, said one dwelling, attached or detached, when one such dwelling is customarily incident to a principal use and is located on the same lot as the principal use. So, example of that would be a dwelling within a motel or hotel, or a dwelling for a caretaker or watchman employed on the premises are acceptable dwellings under this provision. And so, the problem that we were running into previously with a provision that basically allowed one dwelling for a caretaker or watchman was that it's arguable what type of use requires a caretaker or watchman. You know, really, if you had a veterinary clinic and they needed to check animals at night, you know, that'd be one example as well. A lot of what we were getting were, not necessarily in this zoning district, maybe the industrial or motor business, was that, basically, a contractor would build a shop, and they'd have a yard, and would say that they need a dwelling within that building in order to be, you know, basically, a watchman for the construction yard and the equipment. And so, it puts staff in a challenging position, because it really is arguable, really, when you need a caretaker or watchman on the premises. And so, basically, just eliminating that from the provisions here. Moves this on to conditional uses. Basically, including, you know, residential uses, including residential rental unit located on the ground floor, which are not located behind commercial uses or otherwise authorized herein. So, allowing that through a conditional use permit review process. Moves this on to the Motor Business Zone. Basically, the same language that we had discussed in the previous two zones there. Also, removing the one dwelling, you know, for the caretaker or watchman, and also allowing residential uses located on the ground floor through a conditional use permit. Also, looking at permitted accessory uses and structures, basically, striking business office incident to any permitted use shall be located on the same site. Basically, moving that down into a subsection, so keeping that language, and also adding, basically, one dwelling unit per lot where accessory to a permitted principal use, and just allowing that by right. Taking away the dwelling for caretaker or watchman employed on the premises. So, with that, concludes staff's presentation. Our recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, and upon consideration of the testimony presented, recommend approval of proposed ordinance as presented, recommend approval of proposed ordinance with modifications, or do not recommend approval and take other action as deemed appropriate. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have about these amendments.
No.
So, Michael, did we-- who got alerted for this hearing? Did you send out to people in the, in these districts?
Well, it's a legislative amendment, so we just publish it 15 days in advance in the paper.
Yeah. I can't think that it's an issue. I mean, we have residential allowed in the Central Business District, right?
Correct. It has to be located behind or above commercial uses.
So, basically, the same thing. It just seems, I can't imagine that we haven't done this before, so I'm really ready for this. In my mind, we should get residential anywhere we can possibly pack it in, and, but apparently there aren't hundreds of people who are vastly interested.
Well, we have received numerous inquiries over the years about doing that, you know. I guess a good example is Anytime Fitness, when they did the remodel of the Sandpiper. They had, you know, of course, you, Planning and Zoning Commission had reviewed that when it came through--
Right, right.
Because the only way to accomplish that was through a planned unit development. And so, they had to go through that process, which requires, you know, investment in architectural drawings and elevations with a little uncertainty, you know, of having to come to a commission and, you know, gain approval of the project.
My question has to do along those lines, because Anytime Fitness had residential on the second story, and none of these zones specify that residential would also be allowed on the second story. What am I missing? Do you know what I mean?
It says above or behind.
I think it infers both above or behind. So, above could be second, third, fourth story.
Located on the ground floor, shall be located behind, but it, no, they all say located behind commercial uses, and they've said that on every single one.
This is the--
Or what am I missing? Yeah, wait a second.
Let's go back to a typical one.
Because I was looking for it, and even starting with the neighborhood one.
It's always there.
Shall be located behind, in a manner that-- where am I, where's above? Where is it? Am I not seeing it?
Good point.
It's not there.
It's not there on any of them, because I looked for it on every single one.
Excellent point.
The residential uses would be allowed--
But it doesn't say, it should be behind or above.
Well--
Just they don't want it on the ground floor.
Yeah, that's the current--
In currents.
If you look at the legislative amendment, that's the current language that exists there, and so, we didn't specify above, but we certainly could.
Well, I think it should be, absolutely.
Okay.
Because when you look at Anytime Fitness, that's where they located the residential, and we want to make sure it's not just, so people don't read it thinking they can only do it on the street level, that they also--
Sure.
Can do a second story, so.
So, okay, so, right, so I'm looking at the draft that you sent out, that's got the red mark up, and I just started on the Neighborhood Business one. Residential uses, including residential, provided any dwelling located on the ground floor shall be located behind commercial uses, in a manner that doesn't.
So, it's really implied that they're allowed above as well, it's just that the ones located on the ground floor has to be located behind commercial uses.
See, I don't think it's clear enough. I think it needs to really expressly state that you can also do it on a story above the street level.
I think it's a good point. I think we need to just encourage people to realize that they can have residential, because any residential we have in our commercial districts helps us to keep open past 4 o'clock. It's a great thing.
Right. So, what I hear is a discussion of adding, and I'm going to guess, the words "or above."
And/or above.
And--
Or above.
Or above, commercial use. Look behind.
The problem there could be the rest of the wording of that is about the street frontages--
Such a manner that it will not interrupt the commercial frontage.
Yeah, so it might have to be inserted in some other manner, not to confuse it with-- because it wouldn't matter if it was on the front or the side.
Yeah, that's the kind of the way I read it, is that residential uses are permitted, and then it just says, "provided that any dwellings located on the ground floor," and then it goes on about what you can do on the ground floor, but basically, it says residential uses are permitted.
Ah, so I hear Kurt suggesting a different edit, which is residential uses, comma, including residential rental unit, are permitted, comma, provided any dwellings located on the ground floor shall be behind commercial uses.
I think it needs to be a second sentence. I mean, you know, just separate it.
Okay.
Gets a little bit--
Yeah, I think--
Why don't, why don't-- while we continue through the public hearing, Wendy, why don't you take this and look and decide where you want to insert that? Because you're going to make a motion.
Okay.
All right. Are there other questions for Mike, other than this clarification of above, behind?
So, I kind of got the big picture question of, so what was the objection in the past to mixed residential, commercial usage? Is, like, there a problem that they're trying to fix by not allowing residential use?
Well, it's odd, because Motor Business in about 1991, pre, I guess, prior to 1991, basically allowed all residential uses within those zones. That's why we had so many problems out on the A Street corridor-- Oh, yeah. --with apartment buildings being built within a Motor Business zone, and then we have financing issues where they, if they get, you know, torn down or destroyed, 70% of the replacement value, they basically can't be reconstructed, because now they're not in allowed use within Motor Business. And so, yeah, it used to, it used to be mixed use, and then in 1991, I don't know what the thought behind that was, but they eliminated all residential uses through, except through a planned unit development process within that zone. And so, really, that's, you know, they had continued to keep building apartment complexes, they had just gone through the PUD process in order to do that. And so, yeah, I don't know the reasoning why they eliminated it completely, except through the PUD during that time, but that's really what happened. Okay.
Did you have a question, Dan?
Is parking going to be a problem, do you think? For the people who, I'm just imagining, what if it's a big enough building that you could have half a dozen apartments upstairs, and then all of those half a dozen people or dozen people all have vehicles?
Well, usually, what drives density is the amount of parking you can fit on the site, and so, the only area we exempt, the off-street parking requirement, is Central Business, so downtown. Within all these zones, parking is still required at our typical rate, and so, they would still need to provide parking, off-street parking--
Okay.
--on the property, you know, in order to satisfy that requirement, so.
Because the parking table is somewhere else, and we're not seeing it right here.
Yeah, parking table is in Chapter 6, our supplementary regulations, and it lists, you know, parking requirements for single-family, two-family, multifamily. So, you know, in the case of a mixed-use scenario, we would just take whatever the use is, you know, usually depends on the square footage of the building for commercial, you know, we'd take the calculation for that, and then if there was an attached, like on a corner lot, residential component of that, then we'd have to, you know, add up those as well. So, we would tally up both the commercial and the residential parking requirement, and that would be what's required to be provided on-site.
So theoretically, if they had just barely the minimum they needed for their, their commercial use, and they have no extra slots, then that would preclude them from doing any residential unit, because they would have no parking.
That would preclude them, yeah, unless they had found, you know, a parking lot that's adjacent, you know, we allow that. If it's adjacent to the property, you know, we allow that, as long as there's enough parking on that property.
Okay.
We also allow off-street parking within a certain distance, walking distance--
Okay.
--through a conditional use permit. And so, there is some options with joint use, shared parking, that are available in those situations.
Good question on parking. Other questions?
Well, I'd like to run this wording before I make a motion out.
Okay, and I'm still running the, taking input on the meeting, but--
Okay.
So, I'll give you another moment to ponder. Okay, so I think no more questions for Mike. Thank you, Mike. So now, we will open the public hearing and accept testimony in favor. When you get settled, Mike, I have a question to ask about the email testimony that we received from Victoria Severt, in terms of process. I don't think last time, when we received email testimony during a legislative hearing, we were clear on process. If, before the meeting, you told me that the board is able to accept that hearing, that testimony, up to the time at which it closes.
Sure. Yeah, we had specified within quasi-judicial matters that it has to be five days in advance, but still up to the discretion of the hearing-making body. Within legislative amendments, basically states that written comments may be forwarded for consideration anytime prior to the close of comments, as determined by the board hearing the matter.
Okay.
And so, basically, it'd be up to the commission, the chair, as far as accepting those comments.
Okay. And my recollection is that Victoria sent her email on Saturday, after the packets were assembled, and Ann forwarded it on to us on Monday. So, my question first is to staff, are you comfortable with the information that Victoria provided, that you're prepared to address it?
The email's public comment, and so, as long as you're--
Okay.
--comfortable to accept that as public comment.
And then I want to ask, because last time, we had a very lengthy, tightly reasoned document presented to us at minutes before the meeting, and it seemed that that felt uncomfortable. I want to make sure that you feel comfortable with the testimony that Victoria Severt provided. I'm seeing general head nodding.
Yeah.
My interpretation was that it was generally in favor, which is why I'm asking at this point, so I would like to include that with the hearing record, then.
Yeah, one quick question, wasn't last time, hadn't the hearing already been closed?
Ah, there were two times that, in the last one. Once, after the hearing was closed, while we were deliberating, we got input--
Yeah.
--which we declined.
Yeah.
But the other time, it was just while I was having dinner, that I found the email. And so, I just wanted to be sure that there was unnecessary angst, I thought, out of that other one, and I just wanted to be sure everyone was comfortable with this, accepting this late-arriving testimony. So, that's the only testimony, it looks like, we have that is in favor of the legislative amendment. Is there any testimony opposed? Is there any testimony of a general nature? All right, then I will close the public hearing, and Wendy, your moment is to begin a conversation about how you would like to edit.
All right, this is my suggestion before I make a motion.
Right, let's listen to the suggestion.
Because it's contorted language to begin with. Residential uses, including residential rental units, or a residential, are permitted on stories above, or located on the ground floor, or if located on the ground floor, shall be located behind commercial uses in a manner that will not interrupt commercial frontage on the primary street. So, what I'm changing, or recommending changing, is residential uses, including residential rental unit, residential, there needs to be something missing there, but, are permitted above, or if located on the ground floor, or you could say on floors above, if that's, if the word floors is needed.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So, it's just, it's just clarifying the fact that residential uses are permitted on stories above the ground floor, as well as on the, on the ground floor if they're located behind commercial uses.
I think if I was going to add above, residential uses above, I would probably add it right after residential rental unit.
Including resident--
Residential uses, including--
Residential rental units above, but they all--
Residential rental unit or residential uses above, but I, you know, to me, residential uses implies that all residential uses are allowed, and then it specifically says, "provided that any dwellings located on the ground floor shall be located behind commercial uses in a manner that will not interrupt commercial frontage."
Yeah, yeah.
So, me, it just, me, it's implied that residential uses are allowed, it's just that if they're located on the ground floor, they have to be located behind commercial uses. So, to me, that, you know, I don't think anything needs to be changed, but--
Yeah, that was, that was what I meant about it, was that residential uses are allowed, and then it goes on to talk about, if they're on the ground floor, you have to do this and this.
Well, I guess my question, then, is why is including residential rental unit, why is that in there? I mean, if you're going to allow more than one residential use, probably one of them's going to be--
Yeah, and that's just the current language, you know, we were just being, yeah, we were just being consistent with the wording of other zoning districts as well, but, and so, that's why that's included, we just didn't change that portion of the--
Well, because I think it'd be clearer to at least say residential uses are permitted, and if located on the ground floor, shall be located behind commercial uses, rather than including residential rental unit. I don't know what that does for you, for the ordinance.
Mike, is there any other zoning district that also already uses that?
Well, the problem is, we have residential uses, but then we break out residential rental unit, and that's pretty much kind of a separate use that's listed, basically, in our uses within each zoning districts. And so, that's why they, you know, our zoning code's an exclusionary code, in that if the use isn't listed, that means it's not allowed in that zone.
But you can rent out R1, a house in R1. So, I don't really understand what--
A residential rental unit isn't renting out a house. Residential rental unit is similar to a boarding house. And so, that doesn't, yeah, anybody can rent, basically rent out a single-family dwelling, that would be declared a residential rental unit. Let me give you the definition of a residential rental unit. Let me give you the definition of a residential rental unit. A residential dwelling not occupied by its owner, in which no more than six roomers are housed or compensated on a weekly or longer basis, and which is not a fraternity, sorority, student cooperative, or tourist home. So basically, it's just allowing, you know, within our definition of family, so single-family, we limit the occupancy to four unrelated individuals. This is just a means of allowing two additional individuals to reside there. And so, that would be a residential rental unit, that's pretty much the distinction.
Just an apartment, it's recognized.
Yeah, when, when we went through the whole discussion of revising our family definition, you know, there's three aspects to that, um, you can have unlimited number of related individuals, you can have, basically, two unrelated individuals, and however many related to them, that still constitutes a family, so that's basically two families living in a house. Or, um, it's restricted to four unrelated. And so, you know, about seven, eight years ago, when we revised the definition of family, we still wanted to include an opportunity to have additional people to reside in certain dwellings, and so that's basically why we had, uh, either created or left residential rental unit and a boarding house. They're similar, boarding house requires the owner to live there, but still limits the number of, of roomers or boarders to six. And so, that's the distinction, kind of, between a single-family dwelling and a residential rental unit.
But, let me, a question, sir. Then, we, we can build a, an apartment house in this general business district, can't we?
Mm-hmm. There would be residential uses.
Correct. But with this proposed amendment-
Right.
Uh, with the previous one, um, you, you could still do that, you, you just had to go through a conditional use permit process to do that, so.
Is it, including residential rental unit?
So how many apartments are above any-time fitness, for example? Because I guess I'm also wondering why it has to be lim, if we really want mixed-use buildings, why is it limited to one residential unit? Because that's how it reads to me, and maybe that's, I don't know if that's the intent or not.
It's getting, to sound clumsier and clumsier, uh, to be honest with you, I mean, I think, uh, we should be able to build a, you know, if you're willing to put a parking, uh, structure below, you can build yourself an apartment. I mean, nobody, uh, most people don't want to live in a place that doesn't have a parking place, but it just seems like we're hung up on a world that we didn't want to be in, uh, in the first place. I mean, we're back in that old segregation world, you know, we loved the word segregation for dozens and dozens of years in our codes, we wanted every little thing to be separate and discreet, one, one, a single-family, you know, R2, R3, R4, R5, and all that, and we, so segregation was a big deal, we seemed to love it in America, but now we want to get away from that, and, and by making a discussion about a rental unit here just seems odd to me. I'm starting to feel less comfortable with that.
Well, it was just clarification about why the residential rental unit was included in the existing language.
It's a, it's, it's a clarification that all residential uses, including this-
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Peculiar one, that is, a non-familial one, are possible.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and the only limit on where it says one was just in the industrial zone.
Yeah, we're, right now, it's restrictive, we're including this mixed-use option.
Well, then why wouldn't you have resi, residential rental unit as a plural? I see it as a singular, and so it, to me, it means one.
Oh, I, I see, as opposed to-
That's, yeah, just-
-the noun residential rental unit-
Yeah, I mean, that's-
-being a residential use.
If I were an architect, which I am, reading this, trying to figure out what my client could do, I, I would be scratching my head.
More than house, more than house in there.
Yep, so what about, uh, residential uses, including residential rental units, semicolon-
Right, right.
-semicolon, uh, "Any dwellings dropped, provided that," and put, "Any dwellings located on the ground floor shall be located," et cetera. So it'd be residential uses, including residential rental units.
Are permitted.
Semicolon.
Yeah.
Uh, it already says that it'd be-
We're always saying at the beginning of the session.
Yeah, gotcha, okay.
So, semicolon, then it just goes to, "Any dwellings located on the ground floor shall be located," et cetera.
So did, did you only add an S to unit and then a semicolon?
Yeah, an S and a semicolon, and dropped two words, so I think we're ahead of the game.
Rental units, semicolon, "Any dwellings located."
"Any dwellings located on the ground floor," yeah.
On the ground, shall be located behind commercial uses in a manner that will not-
Okay, Deb has a question, let's let that word get in edgewise.
Why are they specifically point, if they're listed elsewhere as being a residential use, why are we spelling them out and not all other kinds of residential uses? Why, why are we singling them out if they are one of many types of residential uses? Does that make sense?
Yeah, this is the existing language, the new language we're adding is underlined, so that's the way it currently exists. If you don't like the way it currently exists, we can certainly strike that from that, I mean, I think it's a-
It does seem confusing, like, why pick that one to, to point out as opposed to some other kind?
The problem we run into is that, you know, other zones say residential uses, including residential rental unit, and so if we don't carry the same language over from those other zones, then someone can make the argument, "Well, you specified that residential rental units are allowed within this zone, maybe that means that they're not allowed in this zone within residential uses," is the reason.
Oh, 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 okay.
It's mainly consistency across the zoning code.
If the pattern didn't exist, we wouldn't repeat it, but it does exist.
We plan on going through and fixing, you know, a lot of this language with a, with the updated code, um, it's just that we haven't gotten to it.
Well, it seems to be tied, that, that unit, a singular word, unit, seems to be tied to this sort of semi-ridiculous thing that many cities had, that, "Well, you can't have residential in here, because this is an industrial zone, or this is some kind of a zone, and, and in one unit, because there'll be a little manager that'll be in there," and that was a big debate, often, and so people tried to hide the fact they were living there by calling it the manager's place. But that word, unit, sort of implies that we're talking about one thing somehow, and I want to be talking about many units.
You and I both, that's the problem.
And so, I want this thing to, if there's any inference, I want to be presumed that it's a five-story residential, uh, that we've got a parking underneath with a, a concrete floor, and we, a stick-built, uh, four stories on top of it, and we've got, uh, 13 units, and, uh, and that would be the norm, rather than this, one, this unit, uh, thing that we're talking about.
Well, that would be allowable under this, even though it may seem just residential rental unit, I mean, within these zones, you're able to have multiple principal uses, and so you could have 13 residential rental units. Just because it's not plural doesn't mean that you can't have multiple.
But almost 13 are going to be rental units, too.
Right, right, but, but I-
Well, they may rent them, but it doesn't mean they're residential rental units, I mean, it doesn't meet the-
Residential rental unit, the whole thing is one noun, which means, like a boarding house, it means six unrelated people.
It's a definition.
Right, it's a, it's a specific definition.
And there could be multiples of that.
Oh, oh my gosh.
If we stuck in the-
Yeah, we're definitely, uh-
I mean, I don't-
We're walking down a dark alley here.
So, so, Mike, if, if we heard, you heard Kurt's suggestion, you would counter, "Don't make units plural, just put in the semicolon."
We can put in a semicolon, but I, you know, we just like consistency across zoning districts, because-
Right, yeah.
-that's really what we don't have right now. I mean, you go, you can see the language in a lot of them, it's differing, and so-
Right.
-all the amendments we try to make, um, in the present, we try to make as consistent with the language in other districts, so it avoids confusion.
Right, so it's either change them all or nothing.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
May I ask, may I suggest even more?
Sure.
Uh, residential uses, including residential unit or units, "Provided that any dwellings located on the ground floor, or dwellings located above, be located in a manner that will not interrupt commercial frontage."
Well, that would imply that you would have to have a commercial on the second floor, or the third floor.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I mean, I think, I think the consistency argument across the codes wins, and I think that it says permitted principal uses, residential uses. I think that's pretty clear.
So, the uses being plural-
Yeah.
-there.
Yeah.
Any number of uses-
Right.
-including this particular one, which if we inserted the word boarding house-
Right.
-might look different to us, then when we see residential rental unit, we think one apartment.
You almost have to take that residential rental unit and put a perens after it and say, "See-"
See definition.
"-see the glossary."
Yeah.
Because I have no idea what a residential rental unit is, uh, I know we've had, we, I know we've, it's been discussed, but it isn't part of my, when I discuss cities, it's not anything I talk about.
I saw apartment there.
That, yeah, that's a common question that we get, you know, it's, there's confusion from the public as well on that, and so we have to clarify that a lot.
So, it seems to me like we probably need to just, uh, go on with this thing, and if we, and, and come back and, and debate this issue later, I hate to have, uh, confuse this fairly simple issue with, uh, getting rid of that residential rental, uh, unit being said so often. It seems strange that it's being said as much as you're inferring that it is.
Yeah, I, I would say, like I say, that the, the consistency argument wins, that if it's, that if it gets changed, it should be changed everywhere in the code, and I think while the language is a little clumsy, uh, and, and the confusion is caused by, by then switching to "Any dwellings located on the ground floor" almost sort of implies something about ground floor, second floor, but it actually doesn't when you read it. And I mean, so long as staff knows that it doesn't, and, you know, I, I, I think, yeah, it, the language could be cleaned up, and it might be a good one to put on the list for the, for the whole code review, but I think for our purposes, right now, to fix the problem we're talking about, that probably we should just leave it just like this, yeah.
So, so, I, I hear Kurt saying, "Go with it as it is." I think I just heard Rebecca say, "Adding two words," or "above."
In some.
Wendy has gotten quiet.
Well, I think it's really clumsy language.
Okay.
And I, I-
No, just stay out.
Consistency, consistency with clumsy, clumsy language, to me, isn't the best argument, but, um, you know, it's like, do you keep perpetuating a problem, or do you take care of it? And, and I, and if we're going to take care of it soon, in a, in a bigger way, then I'm okay with it, I suppose, but, um, I don't think consistency for consistency's sake is always the best argument.
Well, in the near future, we're going to go-
Sure, we messed it up, but we do it the same way every time.
Yeah.
Mike?
In the near future, what we're looking at is going towards a table of uses, so that would clarify, you know, instead of listing everything under each zone, we have a table that lists all the uses that you can have, and then the correlate, you know, the corresponding zone at the top, and so, you know, that, that'll fix everything, but in the meantime, you know, we're just trying to be consistent with what we have.
Michael, didn't this, that residential rental unit is, uh, is in our life, because we had this debate in the last several years about what a house with a bunch of fraternity boys in it was going to be, right?
Correct, correct.
And so we're, that's burning in our little chest, and it almost has no reason to be burning in our chest, but it is, and so here we are, uh, kind of loaded down with this hot, uh, topic, which hopefully, in a few years, we'll have forgotten about, or whatever. But, yeah, I, I think I see where it's coming from.
It's pretty contorted, and we, we need to clean it up in, in this sort of bigger picture.
So.
I've got one of these residential rental units right across the street from me, and we could have, that's a different discussion.
It's a different story. Kurt, would you like to make a motion?
But yet, I don't know how it fits in neighborhood business, uh, because I have it right in R3, right there, before my very eyes.
I would actually make a motion that we accept the, uh, ordinance amendment as written by staff. Second?
Okay, thank you, Kurt Gregory. Um, with staff noting the variety of heartburn.
And, and a typo on, on, in paragraph number two, restaurants.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, which one?
Uh, the point, line number two, first line of part two. Retail sales personals and-
Restaurants, okay, so not in the red, just below the red.
Yeah, just below the red.
Yes, retail sales personal service and restaurants.
Should've given up on the, on the above part.
And-
Not happily, but I-
Right, that's, that's what I, I'm hearing in the discussion, is that you can pack them on however you want to, as long as it's not infringing on the commercial frontage.
If they're on the ground floor.
Or above, if you made a huge stairway or something, that, I mean, just, the commercial frontage is what we value, and you can pack in as many residential uses as you want.
I think it would be, but, yeah, getting rid of the, "Provided that" would be helpful, and just saying, "Any dwellings located on the ground floor shall be located behind," and separate the two, so that it's a, it's a slight modification, but it's residential u, permitted, permit, principal uses and structures, residential uses, including resi, residential rental unit, whatever that is, and then stop, and then say, "Any dwellings located on the ground floor shall be located," and just separate them, so it's not a run-on sentence that you can, would that be too much of a departure from the rest of the code to make it confusing, or, or?
Yeah, it's just another consistency thing, I mean, central business, it says exact, you know, those exact words, and that's why we just carried that over in that, in that fashion.
Yeah, so it's in the name of consistency to make Mike's life easier, it's we should hold ourselves to the red if we're going to start messing around.
Ah, right, because we didn't notice changing the rest of the code.
Get a second.
Kurt did give a second, yes.
Yes.
Cool, all right. So, with various angst and reservations, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, in concept, not as written.
You know, we'd probably, no, excuse me.
Abstentions. All right, I think it's passed, Mike, angst and all. Now, see you at a comment, and then we'll move on.
Oh, I think we've had this before us, haven't we? Probably, Bill has probably quickly read this a few times-
Yeah, we've reviewed it a couple times, yeah.
And we just sat there, and it glaze right by us, and so on.
Pointy had second story in there, but-
It's amazing when you can get clear-eyed, uh, on these issues.
Or not.
All right, number seven, Mike, continued discussion of potential reduction in setbacks for the motor business zoning district.
So this is just carrying over, um, you know, as you recall, the other council goal, uh, out of the two, 2013 council goals, as, you know, in relation to the expansion of the North Main Street corridor, uh, we also had the reduced setbacks within motor business as a potential option, uh, instead of basically a zone change within that area, and so, we had previously discussed this, uh, I believe, at the end of July, the 23rd, as well as October 8th, and so, we were going to bring, you know, we were going to, maybe this last review of this, and then bring a legislative amendment at the next meeting, uh, but the more and more we thought about this, um, we really just wanted to, to research it fully, and really understand the implications, uh, of allowing reduction in a 10-foot setback within the motor business zone, and so, uh, we thought of, you know, Chapter 6, our supplementary regulations, uh, contains a portion or a section, which is called the alternate front yard setback requirement, essentially, uh, and it only applies to residential zoning districts, and basically what it says is, if you're in, and it usually only applies to older established areas where you have these larger 80-foot wide right-of-ways and ma- areas where you have these larger 80-foot wide rightaways and maybe your front property line is right up against the front of your building hat, you know, up against the front of your house. And so if somebody wants to come in and develop a vacant lot that's in between two of these older houses with, that have 80-foot rightaways, well, they're required to have their front setback and maybe that front setback is 20 feet. And so that means that, you know, you, on either side, you have two houses that are right up against the property line. Then this new house is required to be 20 feet back from the property line, which means that it's got to, you know, be 20 feet back from the other houses that are up against the property line. It's going to ruin basically the street, you know, the street wall. And, and so we allow this in residential and it basically, what it basically says is you're allowed to take the average setbacks of the two adjacent properties. And so in the, the example I had just given, when they're right up against the property line, basically that becomes your setback that you're allowed to build to if you're going to build a new house between those areas. And so we thought, you know, a little bit more about this. It also has a provision, if you have a corner lot with no principal building, the minimum setback should be assumed to be two-thirds of the minimum required front yard for the zoning district and this distance shall be used in computing the said average setback. So there is some, you know, allowances in there for corner lots. But since it only applies to residential zoning districts and we're thinking about that North Main Street corridor where all the buildings are basically constructed up against the property lines, you start to think about, you know, whether or not we could expand this section to include commercial uses as well, to, to solve, you know, one of those problems. And so, you know, looking at this area, I think it makes sense in that we have a 12-foot wide sidewalk, you know, on the west side of the street. This whole sidewalk's 12 feet wide. It would allow, you know, if we were to include commercial within that provision, basically you'd be allowed to construct any new buildings, you know, right up to the property line as long as they're consistent. You know, maybe we could craft some language that talked about, you know, not just the adjacent properties, but maybe the average of the whole block.
Oh, the whole block.
You know, I think would make sense because we run into issues with residential properties and that, you know, maybe one of them's right up where it should be, up against the, the street, but then all of a sudden you have this idiosyncrasy where there's one that's 40 feet back and you're stuck having to average, you know, this enormous setback and then you end up with something that's not up against the street anyway. And so, you know, we could think about crafting some language that would include, you know, all of these blocks even up on this, as we extend from C to D street here. You know, the same thought, the majority of these structures, or at least, you know, three-quarters of them are built right up to the property lines. So we could do, you know, maybe a, a certain percentage on a block would be that. We also wanted to look at, if we're going to reduce this 10-foot setback to something, you know, smaller than that, really wanted to look at what 10 feet is because when you're driving along the street, 10, you know, you're looking at it on a plan, 10 feet seems like a, a large distance, but in reality, it's not really that far. And so we're looking at Third Street here and really, before we move forward on this, we wanted to talk with Idaho Transportation Department about a potential road widening. You know, this is one of the congestion points in Moscow is, is West Third Street and it's backed up at certain times and we have a high volume of traffic that, that goes down there. It's probably our highest volume in town. And so with the congestion that's currently occurring, if you were to construct, you know, if say we went to a zero setback and you were to construct buildings, you know, basically we have the buildings on the north side that are already, for the most part, at least some of them built right up to the property line. And these property lines should be skewed to the south a little bit, you know, these, they're skewed a little bit, so they should be at the back of walk here and basically at the back of walk here on that south side. And so we may be putting ourselves in a position that at some point in the future, if we're going to expand the roadway for a larger capacity, basically we're allowing construction of buildings right up to those property lines. That may prohibit us in the future from doing that. So we at least wanted to have a conversation with ITD about this because this is one of the corridors that's currently motor business. You know, it transitions here from central business and then it goes to motor business. And then, you know, out on Pullman Road, obviously the majority of that corridor is within the motor business zone as well. And so, you know, just to, to kind of visualize what 10 feet looks like, take a look at the, the RE/MAX building there. So what we have is basically a five-foot walk and that's where the property line should be, is right here. We went out there and measured that, it's about seven to eight feet from the back of walk to the edge of the building. And so when you're going down the street, that building doesn't seem like it's set back seven to eight feet from that property line, you know. And so really just wanted to, to think about, you know, I mean, it, it almost looks like it's five feet from the property line, you know, it's a little bit more. And so really wanted to think through the way you feel as a pedestrian in this area, you know, if you're downtown or even on that North Main Street corridor, you have a sidewalk that's 12 feet wide. You're buffered from the cars, you know, you can walk on the, the west edge or the east edge, whichever side you're on. In this circumstance, imagine the building was right up to the sidewalk, you had that level of traffic, maybe you're out on Pullman Road, Pullman Highway, and you have four or five lanes of traffic, you know, 35 miles an hour to 45 at the end. It seems a little bit too tight and not safe when you're on a five-foot walk and you have the building right up against the back edge of the sidewalk. And so maybe we could think about, you know, changing the setback, but maybe doing 10 feet off the back edge of curb, you know, maybe more appropriate than just maybe, you know, either through a conditional use permit or allowed by right, allowing a structure to go right up to the back edge of walk or right up to the property line. And so-
So you're able to separate the two circumstances though? So on North Main, you're able to, because of the wider sidewalk?
Yeah, if we did the, you know, maybe 10 feet from the, the back edge of the walk, the back edge of the curb, excuse me, you would still be 10 feet, sidewalks 12 feet, so obviously you can't build on the rightaway and so you'd be able to build right up to that property line, even if we didn't amend the alternate front yard setback for commercial. You'd still be able to do that. And then in this circumstance, when you measure from the back edge of curb, you'd still be, you know, about five feet back. And that's still pretty close. I mean, five feet back, just imagine the, you know, another sidewalk right here. And so about right where this landscaping begins, you know, that's about that five-foot mark, you know, the building's set back seven to eight feet. And so just thinking about the safety factor and the way it, you know, the feel of, of walking down, especially these motor business oriented corridors where there's a high level of traffic and really that's the intent of motor business in the name, is that, you know, you're getting there primarily by a, a car or vehicle.
Go ahead.
Well, I had several things going through my mind. Every building that's currently along there does not necessarily have that buffer strip, so go across the street to the old KFC building, the building is right up to the edge of the sidewalk. So, so there's a big mixture in there already.
Yeah.
And then if they were going to widen it, where do they go as any, anyway? It's like, where would, how could they widen it? What would they do? No, no more sidewalks? I mean, I understand it's congested, but where do you get any more space with, with what's currently there?
Well, it'd basically be, yeah, it'd basically be on the south side and we had looked at the, the lane widths and that's why we really want to have the discussion with ITD to see what their future needs are for that roadway. It appeared that we still could get additional lanes as well as bike lanes with just a, a small, you know, expansion to the south here. And so that's really why we went ahead and wanted to have that discussion. To the north, you actually have quite a bit more room because, as you can see, there's a bit of a tree lawn here and then you also have the five-foot walk. So in front of the old KFC, you actually probably have about 10 feet, which is, you know, a lot, five feet wider than what you have on the south side.
If this gets to be a buildup, kind of like Sixth Street is trying to do and being a real, being used by pedestrians, boy, then, then clearly the five-foot walk is, is really dangerous, it seems to me, and, and it really needs to be 10-foot walks to, because you feel as traffic is ripping right down the sidewalk on Sixth, it's a different, because we have parking on Sixth, so you're protected from the, uh, cars racing by, but here you're not protected. And so, boy, it seems to me like we really do need to think in terms of a wider sidewalk. And certainly, if you look at New York avenues, they don't, nobody parks on New York avenues, but then the sidewalks are more like maybe 20 feet wide.
Yeah.
So they're like, more like, or, or I'm not sure exactly what they are, but that'd be worth looking at because the avenues in New York are just about insane and I think they typically have four lanes. And that's kind of what we're approaching here. Most of these, this street right here has about 15,000 or 16,000 cars, doesn't it? I think it's up around 15.
So, so isn't it like the initial impetus for this is trying to solve the problem for, for the north end of town where we have the commercial buildings that are right up on the property line and we want to try to maintain that downtown feel, but you have to be consistent across motor business?
Correct.
So then you start looking at this. Well, what you, what you said about the, what about the concept of making it a, a conditional use that you could build it right up to the property line? And in that way, that gives the city the ability to make the, the case-by-case decision? And that seems like that might be the easiest. What's a, what's a conditional use permit? It ends up costing four or 500 bucks?
Yeah, we had increased the fees, I think this last go-around, so there, it's around 400, 500 dollars.
Yeah, because I, I mean, there's just so many different setups going on right now that it seems like it would be really difficult to try to write some kind of a blanket zoning.
Well, if you took your suggestion earlier though of going to the backside of the curb and whatever the width of the sidewalk is in that section of downtown, if it's 12 feet, then if you did curb to building front of 12 feet, you could do it here and you'd be comfortable, you'd be right where the RE/MAX building is currently.
Correct, yeah.
So that would, that would serve both districts and you wouldn't have to put everybody through the conditional use process.
Yeah, we, we were thinking, you know, I mean, there's obviously, like you mentioned, Kurt, there's two different, or we have, you know, varying areas throughout town that are completely different and they're motor business. You know, North Main is completely different than this corridor, complete, this corridor is completely different than more of the West Pullman Road corridor. And so it's how do you have a standard that applies, you know, across all of them and, and suits the needs for all those areas as well? Really, we just wanted, you know, this is kind of a long-winded answer to, really, we just needed a little bit more time to think about it. A conditional use permit, you know, if it's something that we're promoting, getting closer to the street, we have kind of reservations about requiring people to go through a conditional use permit if it's something that we want. And so we're thinking of maybe alternative ideas in order to accomplish what we want, but still have a little bit of flexibility and be able to get, you know, get there without going through a conditional use permit process.
One of the things that you see in a couple of the spots north of Third Street is where they have parking between the building and the sidewalk. And that is a very different effect when you let cars be placed between the building than if you have-
Between them?
Well, so-
Like said, like at the-
On Third Street, actually.
Like the laundromat?
The laundromat's the one I think you're looking at.
Right there, and then further to the left, next to Lily, there's another one where there's-
Auto park deal.
That's the auto, the bolts or something, anyway. But so that, putting those cars there is more troubling to me in some sense than having a front yard setback in terms of what it does to the street, what it does to walking, safety along there. So I'd rather that they came a little bit further or just like RE/MAX just had lawn or something and put the parking to the side or behind or, and not.
Yeah.
Backing out of that, those, some of those spots must be very interesting.
Yeah.
And that's currently non-conforming. We don't allow that now. You know, if it's, if it's multifamily, commercial or institutional, you're not able to back out into the rightaway or across, you know, basically a sidewalk.
Right.
In order to get out of there.
Okay.
It's unsafe, you know, especially up here as well.
Yeah.
You know, we require you to have an area to maneuver behind the stalls and be able to head out.
Turn around, yeah, okay. So that, that won't be, whatever happens, that won't be replicated.
No, nope.
So what I think you're saying, Mike, is that you wanted to share with us, okay?
So that, yeah, just wrapping that up, we really just wanted to have a, a chance to talk with ITD about their future plans as well as, you know, explore the 10-foot from back edge of curb as well as the alternate front yard setback for commercial. Think about that a little bit more and come back to you and so, and then as, if there's any more direction that the commission wishes staff to look at, we, we could certainly do that as well. Just wanted to, you know, as we thought about this, there's a lot of implications, just wanted to have some time to discuss that with ITD and think about, you know, some possible options before we move forward with a amendment to the district.
So, so under the heading of further direction or just input or something, I bike from up Main Street and then cross the Washington as it's merging in, right there at CJ's, in that, I, I jump across and then I ride past Han. And that's actually no fun. People are coming around that S curve and you're riding outside of the parked cars to get up past Han and as soon as I can, I turn right on C Street and get out of there. And then coming back, so I'm, I'm going from, from, let's say, Gritman to the city shop. And then I reverse that after work and I come down and I come to Han at C and Main and I go, now, what a car should do is go across and go down Jackson and I go, no way am I doing that. So I go out and I turn and I get on the sidewalk and I ride against traffic, if you will, past the doctor's office and the auto place and whatnot, till I get down to the city water department and then I look carefully every direction and I jump out into the street and act normal again. My concern is that we do some things that make it better for bicyclists along there. On Third, there's no bike lanes, there's no protection for bicyclists. In this stretch on North Main, there's no bike lanes, there's no protection for bicyclists. So as you're thinking about this, how also do we think about ways to make it better for, for bicyclists? Because it's, it's right at the edge of me not going through, doing that at all. I've tried riding through town and then over the hill and that's a drag. I've tried going up Washington, up that hill and down and that's a drag. And if you come back, then do I ride down the one-way the wrong way and into traffic the wrong way? You know, it just doesn't work.
Yeah.
So as we're thinking about this, the super wide sidewalk, I don't feel bad riding past the doctor's place there because it's 10 feet, I ride slow, I can kind of do that.
Yeah.
There, that's one more piece in this whole puzzle.
Okay, okay, yeah, we're really limited in what we can do just because it's Idaho Transportation Department's rightaway and so everything that we do in that area has to be approved through them. And so that makes a little bit of a challenge, you know, if we have creative ideas, you know, it has to go through their permits committee and everything has to be approved. But I think we'll probably look at that, you know, through that basically streetscape enhancement project or the, you know, the entryway beautification included this corridor in this area. And so certainly we could keep that in mind when we're, when we're looking at those things.
Okay. Any other comments before we wrap up this item? So we're expecting- So we're expecting at some future meeting, you're going to bring back finalized...
Yep, we'll keep you updated, and then we'll bring back either...
Something to review and then...
Something to review, correct.
Scheduled, okay. Number eight, discussion regarding outdoor uses in commercial districts.
So, this discussion came about basically because we had, or we've been receiving, the police departments have been receiving complaints regarding outdoor concerts that are happening basically at a location along that Third Street corridor, basically within a parking lot that's adjacent to a residential neighborhood to the north. And so, basically, right now, they've been calling the PD, and it's covered under our Public Nuisance of Noise Ordinance, which is in Title 10, Chapter 11, basically that section, so as you can see, you know, we cover that, loudspeakers, radios, phonographs, amplifiers, as you can tell, it's a little antiquated there, the phonograph.
Where do you find one?
So, basically states that, you know, if you're using any of these items to cause a nuisance in a manner that's disturbing the peace, quiet or comfort of another person, it could be declared basically a public nuisance if this is occurring. And so, further on down, we have these noise source requirements for, you know, we also have residential zones included within this, but really, the pertinent piece is business and institutional zones. Sixty-five decibels is measured from the property line, which isn't a whole lot. We also have a section that talks about amplified sound permit, and so, that's at the discretion of the police chief, and I believe they have been issuing at least one or two of these amplified sound permits, but requiring the music to stop at around nine o'clock. And so, there's been a, a person that's continually been submitting complaints because of these concerts and the PD. It's my understanding that they're hesitant to issue any more of the amplified sound permits just because of the disruption that it's causing in the adjacent residential neighborhood. And so, we were aware of this, and we thought it'd probably be a good time to go through and just take a look at how we handle outdoor uses within commercial zones, and if there's anything, any changes that the commission thinks feels are warranted, we could certainly, you know, direct staff to take a look at it, research what other jurisdictions do, research what we have under our code. But basically, just wanted to go through the commercial section of our zoning code and really how we handle these outdoor uses, or where they're included within the commercial zones that we currently have. And so, usually, it falls within the limitations on uses portion, so we have all the permitted uses, we have all the accessory uses, we have all the conditional uses, we have the special uses, and then we list limitations on uses. And so, basically, these are the restrictions that are applied to some of the permitted uses within these zones. And so, looking at our RTO zone, which only applies to Alturas Technology Park right now, basically states that all uses and related commercial activities shall be conducted wholly and entirely within an enclosed building, except for parking and loading areas, outdoor dining areas for eating and drinking establishments, and outdoor play areas necessary for daycare facilities. So, we specify some activity there that's, you know, basically has to be conducted within buildings. Looking at central business and general business, really, the only thing we say there is operations conducted on the premises shall not constitute a nuisance beyond the property lines by reason of smoke, fumes, odor, steams, gases, vibration, noise, hazards, or other causes. So, you know, usually, we let the police department handle the nuisances, because that's really where it falls within the code, but we also have a means to enforce that through the zoning code through this provision, since it includes noise there. And so, you know, outdoor cafes, really, we have no restriction right now on these outdoor concert venues or anything else that, you know, somebody wants to conduct outdoors that may be a nuisance to adjacent property owners of the neighborhood. Looking at motor business, basically, we state that all uses have to be conducted wholly and entirely within enclosed buildings, except, and then we go through a list of uses that are allowed to be outside of those buildings. And so, you know, these are just some examples that are included within the code, kennels, outdoor advertising, parking loading areas, drive-in theaters, we also have outdoor dining areas at the bottom here. Looking at urban mixed commercial, operation conducted on the premises should not constitute a nuisance beyond the property lines, and so this is pretty much the same language within the other zones about nuisance issues, and noise would be included within that. We have the neighborhood business zone, which specifically under the permitted uses, so this isn't in the section that's limitations on uses, this is just under permitted uses, basically states that retail sales and personal, personal services conducted wholly within an enclosed building, including restaurants, but limited to the sale of goods and services to the household consumer. And so, we had always thought this was a little bit odd, that you're in a neighborhood business zoning district, you know, you're usually in a nice setting that's residential in character, and you're not allowed to have any outdoor seating.
Yeah.
And so, neighborhood cafes come to mind, you know, we've all been to other cities that have converted houses into restaurants, or, you know, restaurants that are on corners of residential neighborhoods that have real nice outdoor seating, you know, that, that isn't, you know, maybe it's breakfast, lunch only, and it's limited to a certain amount of time, they don't do it at night, or if it's at night, you know, they shut down the patio at nine o'clock or ten o'clock, so it's not causing a nuisance to anybody. So, this one's kind of been on our radar for a while, that we don't allow that within that zone, or it's required to be conducted within wholly or enclosed buildings. I think that's, you know, really, for me, the attractiveness of these areas and these restaurants within these areas is to be able to sit down and be under, you know, tree canopies and, and to be able to enjoy the outsides while, you know, being at a restaurant. And so, we've been thinking about this one for a while, and so, really, as you can see, these are really, you know, throughout all of our commercial zoning districts, these are the only instances where we even address any type of outdoor activity. And so, really, just wanted, you know, since we've been getting these complaints, we thought we'd be a little proactive and, and maybe talk about some things that we could do, or get direction from the commission about things we could look at, you know, possibly address outdoor seating areas for restaurants, you know, look at that across all zoning districts, you know, look at maybe outdoor concert venues, things of that nature. And so, we really just wanted to get your input about whether or not you thought it was right that we may, maybe take a look at it and do some research, look at the way some other jurisdictions handle these outdoor uses, and whether or not they're specified in the code or, you know, included, so...
If you expand the discussion a little bit beyond commercial, do we, do we get any complaints at all, for, for instance, for rendezvous? Do we get, do people actually complain, or is that pretty much accepted at rendezvous? In other words, the music, as far as I'm concerned, I, I go to rendezvous every hour that rendezvous is alive, I hear it all, but I just wondered if people in the neighborhood, do we get any complaints on a regular basis at all, or is that pretty much accepted as a public good?
I think it's pretty much accepted, but I, PD would be the ones that would receive those complaints, and usually, they're at the event for security purposes, for the beer garden, and so, I would assume that they get an amplified, you know, music permit for this event, but it's just, you know, it's one of those community events that's, you know, basically shuts down by a certain time.
Right, right.
I don't think it goes beyond ten o'clock, right?
Right, exactly.
So...
And, and the fair, of course, is a fairly noisy affair as well, you can hear for miles and again, a public, so it seems like it has something to do with the general good versus the complaint area that we're talking about is not something that's accepted as a, as a general, you know, a valued thing in the community, it's a little bit more related just a single business, and that seems to change the dialogue, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does, you know, we have these community events, but then we have, you know, and that happens one weekend out of the year. But, you know, if we start continually having, you know, outdoor concert venues every weekend...
Week after week, right.
Then, you know, it could really create a nuisance for, you know, especially if it's adjacent to a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, I, I mean, to me, it seems like it's not an ordinance problem, as I mean, aside from the, yeah, it'd be great to have neighborhood business, you can have a outdoor cafe, but it, it sure does sound like the specific instance is more an enforcement problem than an ordinance problem. And I mean, I think, I think maybe there's a little bit too much slack cut.
Well, I, you know, it hasn't been occurring, I, I don't know what the future plans are for that use, you know, it's in transition right now, and so, who knows where it's going to end up.
Yeah.
But we just wanted to have that conversation, and, you know, you could certainly regulate it through the police department, but, you know, just wanted to have a conversation of whether or not, you know, we thought some sort of, you know, outdoor until nine o'clock acoustic session, you know, some things like that could be included within the code, or...
I, I know the other one that I want, that I forgot to mention, the ice skating rink caused quite a few people to be upset, and I don't hear it as much right now, but there was that noise there, and we, we did have people that thought they were being driven crazy or something because of the noise of the, and it's enclosed more now, that was earlier, before the rink got... But there's another example of a specific group that isn't quite as general, it isn't quite the general good.
Yeah.
But we do, at least we've always thought it was really nice to have ice skating rinks, but I know that there was a lot of complaints there. I was just trying to get at other kinds of noise complaints that have, we've, that we've had to deal with.
Yeah, the ice rink, yeah, it is enclosed more, and then they, when they go to a permanent facility, I think that will eliminate a lot of the noise. I think they've also restricted them on the, the music that plays in there, and so I think that they can only play that during certain times of the day to not create nuisances.
Gregory, I think you had a comment.
Yeah, one of the things that makes downtown Moscow really cool, and a lot of downtown's really nice, is, is that you have these outdoor uses, that you've got all the sidewalk cafes, and I think probably every restaurant and coffee shop downtown has something outdoors at the Old Martins, they've got that great outdoor area that they've, that they've put together. And to the extent we can make some changes in the code to do that more and more, I think that would be great. I don't want to start looking at the code from the perspective of one yahoo who's creating a problem. That, you know, with Kurt on that, it sounds like that's an enforcement problem, there's already a standard in place, and it sounds like they're violating the standard, and law enforcement, for whatever reason, isn't willing to do something about it. If we put a zoning code in place that addresses that, it's still an enforcement issue, but trying to enforce those kinds of things through the zoning code is even more unwieldy because of the time it takes to actually deal with it. So, on the one hand, yeah, let's see what we can do to enhance outdoor uses, and let's not even take that, the noise into account. That's, the police department just needs to stop giving the guy permits.
Yeah.
And if it's over sixty-five decibels at the sidewalk, make him stop.
Yeah. Well, they have been going out there and shutting them down, you know, it's not like they haven't been doing anything. They had got complaints, they had gone out there and told them to close everything down, and they stopped the music, and then they actually came in and applied for those permits to be able to do that after the fact, and I think we still received some complaints at that point. I think, you know, if we were to kind of nip it in the bud a little bit, as far as the zoning code, it would, you know, not allow, if they're planning on building some type of outdoor stage or something like that, that would really be where the zoning code comes in and prohibits that type of activity from occurring outside. You know, if they're allowed to construct the stage by means of there's no specific restriction within the zoning code, then it becomes more of a, you know, obviously an enforcement issue, but it, it allows them to get to a point where, you know, it could be a lot more of a problem than it would be if you didn't allow stages or outdoor venues in the first place for those areas.
But then you, then you end up preventing more than you really want to prevent. I mean, there's a lot of things you could do outside that, you know, musically, that might not draw a complaint.
Yeah.
And if you, if you draw, you know, draw with such a broad brush through the zoning code, you know, again, you're trying to use a far bigger hammer than is necessary to deal with this one incident that sounds like it's a problem, given from what, you know, people have come here and said.
Yeah.
But how long is it going to last? Is there a better way to deal with it, given the existing code?
Mm-hmm.
And it looks like there is.
Yeah.
And, yeah, can, can the problem be solved by somebody standing at the property line with a DB meter, you know? I mean, if the, if the standard is sixty-five decibels, yeah, I don't think that's very loud.
Yeah, the, the police department has those capabilities, so they actually measure the levels when they're out there and, and shut them down. So, you know, it is handled through that, it's just that somebody has to, you know, experience the music, call in a complaint, have them go out there, shut it down, you know, maybe it's ten, eleven o'clock at night, and they have to go through this every time they have some type of outdoor concert going on. So, we're not saying that, you know, we're just basically getting the, whether or not the commission wants us to take a look at it, we're not saying that, you know, we need to restrict all these outdoor uses. I think they're a good part of Moscow as well, so...
Deb had a comment.
So are the complaints that they've received about this because it's gone past the curfew time, or because it is exceeding the decibels? Is it one or the other of those and those, or is it just that this person doesn't want anything happening in there? Because the time limit makes sense, and the decibel limit makes sense, but beyond that, enforcing nothing happening there makes no sense to me. I mean, that's part of what, in my mind, that's no different than downtown.
Yeah. I received this secondhand, so it sounded like it wasn't exceptionally late, you know, it was still around nine or ten o'clock, but it was basically, you know, so it wasn't exceptionally late, but it was more of either trying to study or trying to sleep during that time and just hearing loud music coming from, you know, an adjacent property.
So, staff is seeking direction. What I think I've heard you say is following along, two threads of thought. One, nuisance and other mechanisms are what should address the specifics, and two, expanding the wholesome outdoor activities, restaurant, whatever, is desirable.
Across the zones that makes sense, yeah.
Across the zone, sort of as you...
Yeah.
Yeah, whether it makes sense in RTO, you'll come back to us and share, but...
Sure.
So then the question is, what is the urgency that the commission feels in getting this work done? Because last I heard, you were a little short-staffed down there.
Uh, we do have Becky back from attorney leave, so that is a positive. Um, yeah, we have, you know, quite a few projects going on, but this is certainly one that we could, you know, not really put on the back burner, but as we have time, start to initiate that and take a look at it.
Yeah. Has, has anybody shown up saying, "I want to put in outdoor seating in my neighborhood business zone cafe"?
Um, we have had inquiries in the past about that, yeah.
And so, are you now at the, do you just have to say no, can't do it?
We would say no, yeah, you have to keep it enclosed within the building.
Yeah.
It's pretty clear the way it reads right now that you can't conduct anything outside, so...
Yeah, I would, I would give that one as being the top of the list.
Okay.
So the priority is by March, when somebody wants to start going outside?
Right, right, we have a little bit of time.
Yeah, yeah, we're... Yeah, yeah, we're ready.
I like the fact that you've listened to a couple of people now that have had similar complaints in the same, same place and that, you know, you're gonna, you're concerned enough to look into it and, you know. I mean, I think it's a responsive move to, to think about this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
As usual, we have our issues come up on the edge of our zones that's almost, you can just count on it. In other words, out on the edge of town is where people don't want change and that's where change is going to happen. And at the edge of our downtown district is where change will happen too. And I think we should at least be a little cognizant of that, knowing how that, trying to figure out how that works because, you know, you can, if you see those things change, one of the examples that I lived through and watched was a little neighborhood called Hyde Park in Boise that at one time was just a dead little place, and then it got livelier and livelier, and then there were people out on the street or out in front of the places having libations. And I'm sure Boise went through a real growth period where they weren't sure that they wanted all these people coming to this neighborhood, and it got very popular and it is today. But I think they've gotten used to it, and I, I don't, so it's, at least I feel like it's incumbent on us not to overreact too soon before we see how, because in a sense, most recent complaint is right on the edge of our, of the commercial district. And, and that's where people wouldn't expect that change to take place, but certainly, certainly will.
Yeah, I would, I would think that for the neighborhood business, those are, that's going to be the biggest problem to deal with is, is noise from a, from a place staying open late. And, you know, you can, yeah, I mean, it seems like it would be reasonable to me to say that, you know, you, you shut it down at 10 or you have seating limits, size limits, you know, something like that.
Yeah, maybe the restaurant could be open later, but the outdoor seating has to cease at a certain time, nine o'clock or 10 o'clock, you know, we could look at that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, do you have enough direction?
I think I do.
Next is our upcoming holiday schedule. For those of you who looked ahead on your calendars, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, I believe, we're scheduled to meet, and Christmas Eve, we were scheduled to meet. And I'm looking up and down the row, I don't see much attendance going to happen on those two meetings. Were there others, Mike, that were concerned to staff?
I think it was just the 26th of November and the 24th of December that we were concerned with, so.
Were you going to bring us presents?
Hey, or might.
So, with your consent, we will meet only once in November and once in December, the earlier of the two meetings.
Okay.
That works. Okay. Wonderful. Any other business that we ought to consider, folks? All right, adjourned.